All right. Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on March the 11th, 2025, 10:00 a.m. Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building 200, South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. Public can watch on meeting online, and we have Commissioner Nettles joining us online. First item on the agenda is pledge and allegiance to U.S. Texas flag, and Commissioner Brown will lead those.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for waking us up on this beautiful, beautiful spring day. And as we all gather here, Lord, to do the work of the people of Brazos County, I just ask that you give us wisdom, you give us insight, and you give us the right things to do for our folks. Be with us this day, watch over us, be with all the families that are out for spring break, and give them a safe journey back. All of these, Lord, I ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice abroad. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda, call citizens input and our concerns. We had some voice speak. Beverly Greenwood.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I live on St. Paulo, and I am a co-owner of noeastloop.com. I'd like to discuss the Quiddity contract. Brazos County awarded Quiddity Engineering $11.2 million on February 6, 2024, approximately over a year ago. That contract includes route and design studies to include traffic data and projections, social, economic, and environmental studies, right-of-way data collection to include acquisition cost estimates, utility engineering and relocation investigations, roadway design surveys and construction surveys, and roadway design to include geotechnical data. For the record, the No East Loop leadership maintains that the $11.2 million should never have been executed without the due diligence of justifying the need prior to the expenditure of the taxpayer dollars. A simple and much less expensive traffic study would have been the fiscally responsible action. However, we continue to maintain that the inner east loop is not being pushed to solve Brazos County's traffic problems, but rather has other intentions. In December, the No East Loop Council met with ITS consultant John Polster, ITS engineer Barry Hurd, Judge Duane Peters, Commissioner Chuck Condula, executive director of the MPO, Dan Rudge, Quiddity Vice President Doug Bramwell, news reporter for The Eagle, Joe Southern, and two other Quiddity engineers whose names I do not know. In that three-hour meeting, we asked when the traffic study would be completed. One of the Quiddity engineers told us that it would be completed in three to four months. That was three and a half months ago. On February 19, I emailed Quiddity Senior Project Manager Tanya Hobson and asked when the traffic study would be released. Jackie Wilson of the marketing firm CPNY, a subcontractor to Quiddity on the $11.2 million contract, was also on the email, and this is what she responded, and I have included a copy for the court. "We expect to share traffic information and update refinements to the alignment options at the next public meeting mid this year. On February 20, I replied and asked why the expected date was moved to mid-year. No one responded, so I posted again on February 25. I received this answer back from Jackie. The traffic study is ongoing and has several factors to consider, such as existing and future roadway infrastructure, traffic projections, trip start and end points, et cetera. Additionally, Quiddity is reviewing planning and zoning information, preliminary and final plaits, and new ongoing residential, commercial, and industrial developments. The study team is following the many requirements outlined in the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and this process can take several years. Quiddity is also required to share information with the state and with the Bryan College Station MPO for their review and approval as well." So, members of the court, I ask you three questions. Which is it? Three to four months, mid-year, or several years before we will see the traffic study? Remember that Quiddity has already been on contract since February of 2024. Number two, if this is just a study and not a text-op project, as Commissioner Condula told us back in November at Bryan High, why does Quiddity need to share the information with the state? And number three, when will the Brazos County Commissioner Court put this project on the agenda to publicly and transparently review the work being completed with the taxpayers' $11.2 million? I am now officially and respectfully requesting that the Commissioners' Court put the Inner East Loop and the $11.2 million Quiddity contract on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Simpson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I'm Karen Simpson, and I'm a resident of Brazos County, and this may sound familiar, but bear with me. On December 15, 2024, I made an open records request to Brazos County Elections for a copy of the CVR cast vote record from the November 5, 2024, general election. A cast vote record is a public information used to audit an election. In response, Brazos County stated they would charge me $750 for a copy of that record because they had to redact it first. Texas election code allows for redacting when personally identifiable information may be revealed when a document is released. Our current voting system uses countywide voting, and when one votes outside of one's precinct, it opens the door for a violation of ballot secrecy by using unique identifiers that can be linked to specific voters. By admitting they need to redact the CVR before release, they are admitting that ballots cast are not secret, then argue that records should be withheld to protect ballot secrecy. Last week, this court agreed to purchase from Hart, that is the county's election machine company, a document management, automation, and digital imaging with Vista SG system in the amount of $12,875. As stated in the contract, this system will add a component to the current system for redactions of documents, such as ballots and CVR records, to be in compliance with OHE opinion, that is Attorney General Ken Paxton's office. The current method of responding to open records requests requires additional programming and multiple weeks of manual redaction. The anticipated cost to the requister is expected to be reduced because of increased redaction efficiency. That sounds all well and good, but Texas election code 122.001 states, "A voting system may not be used in an election unless the system is capable of providing records from which the operation, the voting system, may be audited. If a county deletes a precinct number and/or the polling place from the cast vote record, as we suspect this system may, stating such information is personally identifiable, this will make it impossible to audit, as is legally required by federal and state law. As a result, we must choose between transparent election auditability and ballot secrecy because there is no legal way to strike a balance between the two as long as we use countywide voting. By requiring redaction, the county demonstrates that countywide voting fundamentally violates constitutional requirements and must be replaced." Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Greenwood.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll close my wife's comments. I'm now officially and respectfully requesting the Commissioners' Court put the Inner East Loop and the $11.2 million Quiddity contract on the agenda for public discussion in the spirit of transparency, public participation, and fiscal responsibility. On February 9, I submitted a open records request, number 2025-103, wherein I requested copies of all documents provided to Quiddity Engineering LLC upon execution of the Inner East Loop contract, specifically but not limited to requirements for the project, including a program which shall set forth the county's objective, schedules, constraints, and criteria, all work authorizations, and the milestone work schedule, any and all change orders issued, or work stop notices, or any other communication that material affects performance of the contract or changes to the scope of work. That was on February 9. On February 21st, first, excuse me, outside the statutory allowed 10 days for response, I received an estimate from the county saying that I would have to pay for these documents to be produced. I agreed, and on the 24th, I was told that we would receive these documents by March 7. On March 7, I received an invoice. I paid the invoice on the 9. Today is the 11. We still have no documents. On February 9, I submitted open records request, number 2025-104, wherein I requested copies of all documents provided to the county by Quiddity Engineering LLC in performance of the contract, number CIP 23-600, specifically but not limited to Quiddity Schedule for Performance, drawings, preliminary layout, sketches, specifications, payment requests, and supporting documentation, monthly progress reports, minutes of meetings with county project manager, and any and all deliverables provided to date. Response was received on the 21st of February, outside the 10 days statutorily allowed, saying there would be an estimate, and then on the, give me an estimate of cost to provide the documents. On the 24th of February, I was told we would receive these documents by the 7th of March. On March 6, I was told, that's a lot of documents, we need more time. Taken in concert with what my wife spoke about earlier, it seems to be that we're seeing a process, a pattern of slow rolling being established and getting information out to the public about the East Loop project. As the senior executive of the county judge, I respectfully request that you ensure that that does not happen. Additionally, I want to renew my request that the county would issue a stop work order to the Quiddity for a 90-day period for there to be public discussion on the contract. Additionally, as my wife said, I request this be made an agenda item so that the public can have their discussion with you and hear from all of you members of the court, and that you can hear from us as well. Finally, I remain in opposition to the Inner East Loop proposal in its entirety. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you.
Judge, I need to address some facts about this. One, it's not 10 calendar days, it's 10 business days, so your responses were timely. I know that 103 is being sent out today. Part of what he asked for required us to get IT to do a program and search every single email that had been sent back and forth to gather all of those, and that did take some time for IT to get that program together. But his documents are being worked on. I know the public information officer was working on his request this morning because I heard her talking about it, so we'll get him his records.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Russ Ford.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak this morning. My name is Russ Ford. I'm a citizen of Brazos County. When I served on the Commissioners' Court, we were looking for a place that we could designate as the dump, as an acceptable dump for the county. I understand the reasoning behind that, and I appreciate what you're trying to do there. This is not adversarial, this is merely informational. I have information this morning which I have brought to you. You will each get a copy of it, and Mr. Errett has a copy also. It turns out that the property that's under consideration for the dump down in Millikan happens to be on top of a salt dome, about a one-mile diameter salt dome down there. I don't think anybody was aware of it. I spoke with Mr. Errett this morning. I know for a fact he was not aware of that. But I've brought you a 1930s map done by the Texas Company, which drilled at that time the deepest well in Texas, a 16,000-foot-deep well. the deepest well in Texas, a 16,000-foot-deep well down there, and they found this salt dome. The problem with this particular salt dome is there are several faults in the thing, some of them as much as 600-foot differential in the uplift and the downlift on the thing. That will be a direct course for water to be able to move down into the groundwater system and everything. So I'm just asking that you look diligently at these maps and this information. Commissioner Nettles, it's addressed to you, so you're getting the original copy of it. But with that said, just asking that you would take a look at that, please. My second item is speaking on behalf of the group that spoke earlier about the Inner East Loop. What I will tell you is that when I served on the Commissioners' Court, we approved the bond program that basically funded all this, and I personally voted for that bond program. What I was told, and what I believed at the time, is that by the county taking action now, that it gave us a seat at the table with TaxDOT when the route studies were done on this project. I assure you that I don't feel like that Quiddity or ITS, John Polster's group, are acting improperly on these projects, but I will tell you that they work for you. And what I had hoped was, because the county, when I served, we had a policy that we did not use eminent domain for right-of-way. In other words, we went to the citizens, and I was turned down by citizens on several occasions for the, you know, for the use of their property for public roads. But my position is that as a Commissioner, for that precinct, that we need, and these people need to have representation, they need to have somebody that's willing to stand up and say, "We're not going to take your homes. We're not going to go through subdivisions, not on my watch." But instead, and I'm borrowing this from somebody that I heard the other day, we cannot have our Commissioner for that area act like Pontius Pilate and wash his hands of that situation and put it all off on Quiddity and Polster. What I'm asking is that you stand up and be counted and say, "Step one of this process was to review the MPO's alignment." And that's what you're doing right now. You're not doing anything wrong by reviewing that alignment, that's a part of the process. But what I think is that if the Commissioner from that area and then the court would follow along and say, "We do not want to take people's houses, that's not our job. What our job is to find a route alignment that works for the public, and you guys are elected. I mean, every single one of you is elected, and you've got a responsibility to us to make sure that these people are heard." That's all they want, is they want to be heard, they want to understand that you're not planning on taking their homes.
Okay. Thank you. I will respond that we have been saying that, that's exactly what we said, so thank you. Kathy Beans.
I've been away for two weeks, but as I promised, I'm back. I viewed last week's hearing, and I was particularly struck by the conversation that revolved around the county expenditure of nearly $13,000 for a program to be used solely for the purpose of redacting the cast vote records. I didn't know whether I should laugh or scream, honestly. Commissioner Watson, I remember you saying in court that you have worked in the election system process, you have been part of it in the past. So I presume that you know what a ballot image is, that you know what a cast vote record is, and what differentiates them. But I wonder how many of the others on this court do. Have you ever physically seen examples of these? Do you know why those records are requested? They're tools, they're used to audit elections and verify election results. And when the cast vote records were requested and the charge of $750 was applied in order to redact that information, there were no takers. The open market did not respond. Why do you think that is? The county thinks spending $13,000 is wisely spent while the open market won't even pay The reason no one's willing to pay $750 is that a redacted cast vote record cannot be used to audit an election. The explanation for the redactions is to protect personally identifiable information. The dance around that topic last week exposes the fact that this court does not understand what many of us have come to this podium so many times to discuss. You've listened, but you've not comprehended. Have you even wondered what information that was previously permitted is now redacted and constitutes personally identifiable information? Do you know what's being redacted? I have to conclude that you do not. So let me tell you. The voter's registered voting precinct, the precinct location where the vote took place, the signature of the election judge, and the ballot number. Tell me, which of those pieces personally identifies your ballot? If you had an understanding of the process, you would know the answer. You would understand that the election roster, previously published, showing the location where the vote took place, the voter name, and the registered voting precinct has been disabled. Critical to identifying a specific voter's ballot is the combination of the roster and the cast vote record or ballot image. The cast vote record and the ballot image alone cannot be used to identify a voter's individual ballot choices. If you had comprehended what we've been saying in this court, you would understand this. You would know that these redactions are moot. You would understand that spending $13,000 of taxpayer money is frivolous. I have to note that I'm surprised by the court attorney's statement that he had never heard the argument that redactions result in an un-auditable elections while simultaneously violating the rights to audit. We've spoken about this more than a few times. When asked by this court if the-
Thank you. Cindy Wild.
I believe a misstep happened last Tuesday when everyone voted to approve spending $13,000 of taxpayers' money on a redaction software program on behalf of our Elections Department. Last week, Commissioner Brown, you rightfully expressed concerns, but only ballot secrecy was presented as a reason to move forward. Auditability was not addressed. Why do I say that? Texas Local Government Code, Section 81.002. Skipping down Section B2, you swear that you will not vote or consent to make a payment of county funds except for a lawful purpose. Texas Constitution, Article 6, Section 4. The legislature shall provide for the numbering of tickets and make such other regulations as may be necessary to detect and punish fraud and preserve the purity of the ballot box. Mr. Ehret said, "First time this issue has been raised." I believe that is incorrect. Mr. Ehret, for months, has been involved in an ongoing public information request for primary runoff ballots regarding redactions, overcharging, and un-audibility concerns. County attorneys representing counties in support of countywide voting have cited cases that only speak to ballot secrecy and not auditability. That happened here. I spoke regarding this case, Sewell versus Chambers. It is the only case law in Texas that addresses the actual conflict that arises between ballot secrecy and election auditability, whereby there are public interests which outweigh the individual's right to have his ballot kept secret. Our election administrator said she will redact the poll location and other specific areas. Redacting information from the public is not the solution. You are denying the public the ability to audit, as is legally required by federal and state law. No county should allow the Elections Department to be the only ones to audit themselves. Does the IRS allow one to audit themselves? No matter how much or how little redacting, or how much or how little the Secretary of State or Attorney General rules is permissible, it does not eliminate the ability to know a citizen's ballot. The inherent flaw in countywide voting in and of itself is unconstitutional, for it fails to provide ballot secrecy. Last week, Karen Simpson addressed our state constitution. Others and I have read from this section of our constitution regarding sequential ballot numbering, voterless maintenance, national change of address challenges through to the vote county, through to the vote, countywide voting versus precinct voting, and more recently regarding this new term, personally identifiable information. Information that is required to audit and is also deemed personally identifiable presents a conflict, where one must choose between transparency of election auditability and ballot secrecy. There is no legal way to strike a balance of the two where voters are not assigned a vote in a precinct. So now we have the situation whereby the ones who are privy to the ballot information being redacted are those whose job the public has created and whose salaries the public pays, both elected and non-elected, including the Elections Department and third-party vendors whose electronic voting systems are being used to administer such information. This is unjust and tyrannical on its face. You can rescind the motion you approved of spending taxpayers' money on a program that violates one of their constitutional, be it ours, constitutional rights. And I hope you please give that due consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all we have for public comments. We'll move on to number three and consider to take action on agenda items 3 through 19. Number three, proclamation 25-016 proclaiming March 2025 as Red Cross Month. Move for approval.
Second.
Bushman, seconded. Discussion, Ms. Pam? Ah, there you are, okay.
Whereas March was declared Red Cross Month in 1943 with a proclamation from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Whereas the American Red Cross provides services to individuals in crisis locally, nationally, and internationally, 90 cents of every dollar is donated goes to the care of these individuals. Whereas every two seconds, someone in the U.S. needs blood. Red Cross provides about 40% of the nation's blood and blood components. Whereas American Red Cross volunteers respond to home fires every four seconds. Through education, provision, and response, lives are saved. Whereas March sees the increase in severe weather, including tornadoes, flooding, home fires, wildfires, and hurricanes, and the Red Cross has responded to many of the disasters experienced in the last year. Whereas the American Red Cross has also provided service and comfort for many military service members and their families in crisis. Whereas in this March, we celebrate the American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of the people of Brazos County, Texas, and by renewing our commitment to helping our neighbors in the, since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and worldwide, bringing out the best of humanity in the times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers' blood, platelet, donors, and supporters now give back to the hard Texas chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Whereas their volunteer and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in the people's darkest hour, whether they deliver shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, provide critical blood donations for hospital patients, support service members, veterans, and their families to save lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, and deliver international aid and reconnect loved ones with separated, loved ones separated by global crisis. Whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March as in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join their commitment to care for one another. Now therefore, be it resolved, or be it proclaimed, that Brazos County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim, March 25th, March 2025, as Red Cross Month. We encourage all Brazos County, Texas, citizens to reach out and support their humanitarian mission, proclaim the 11th day of March 2025.
Hi, I'm Pam Smith. I started with the Red Cross responding to the Wheelock tornadoes that went through back, I believe, in 26, or 16, and I feel the importance of the Red Cross and what it does do. We do respond to crises as best possible, and we don't have fire every four seconds, which is really nice, but we have wonderful volunteers that go out and take care of individuals in that crisis. Rick will talk a little, tiny bit about Blood Spots.
Yes. The Red Cross has been donating, in the blood services for quite a few years. It takes about 13,000 units a day that the Red Cross usually tries to supply. Currently, right now, with the disasters we've had, the weather, and other reasons, our blood donations right now are down. And that's the reason why we encourage everybody to come donate blood. And we have donations on the 18th at the office, Red Cross Office on Boonville. We have another one on the 25th at the Boonville office. And then at the LDS Church and College Station, there's going to be another drive that Saturday the 25th, I believe. And we encourage everybody because it saves lives, and it's very important that we address those needs for our people that need it, whether it be in a hospital, transfusion, there we go, transfusion centers. It's very important that we be able to supply that to them, and that's one of our cornerstones, is that we want to be able to save lives, and that we do that with our blood services. Thank you.
Y'all come up with big pictures.
Okay. And second hat, I wanted to let you know that College Station Noon Lions Club is honoring our heroes on April 10th, where we honor those that respond to every one of us in a crisis as well, our law enforcement, our paramedics, firemen, so we will be celebrating them.
Thank you. Come on up. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to say.
I love her.
Let's do that again.
You need to take it again, or take another?
Okay, sure.
You need to take it again, or take another?
Okay, sure. Okay. I guess we haven't voted yet, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will move to number four is approval of order twenty-five dash zero-zero-two to approve the ordinance twenty-five dash zero-zero-three prohibiting solid waste disposal in Brazos County and providing civil and criminal penalties.
Judge, I move that we table this until next week so we can study these maps that, that our Republican chairman brought to us today.
Well, I mean, I, I know that it's, that salt dome is four thousand foot deep, and of course, the intent of this really isn't for us to put a landfill out there on that location. The intent is to prohibit it from going anywhere but that.
Yes.
And then have a future court, if, if someone were to come in and buy a property, they can apply for that application through TCEQ, and it's, if TCEQ approves it, there's nothing that the court or anybody, the landowner, anything, they're dealing with it right now in Lee County, because they weren't able to get a, well, they, they actually have the landfill there, but they didn't have that wording in there about a composting plant. We've got it in there. I'd hate to see us delay, because I don't know what, what might be out in the, somebody could be looking right today. We don't know what's.
I understand. Well, I will rescind that.
Okay.
Because we're, it's pretty much a placeholder to make sure drilling or any kind of use of the land ever happens. So, so I don't know that we need it, because we'll never use it.
Well, let's, let's hope not.
Judge, I'd like to move that we approve it.
Okay, we got a motion from second, a second over here. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Judge, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on this issue. As you know, and you just described, the current process doesn't give the current county residents much voice in it. It's over in Austin, and they have limited input. This ordinance is truly a transformative step forward in terms of the voices of the residents are not only heard, but prioritized in the decisions that will impact their lives and the environment. So I want to thank you for doing this, and I understand the concerns of robbing the salt dome, but as you eloquently said, there's really no intention of the county to ever put a dump on that location, but instead to prohibit others from putting land dumps or landfills anywhere else in our county without us knowing about it. So thanks for your leadership, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, I have to add, we don't know what a future court will ever do. So Russ, please keep your maps for the future, just in case a future court were to say, oh, we need a dump, this is where we need to go, so.
And I think Lynn Elliott actually mentioned this in that public hearing we had, that there was a salt dome there, so they're well aware of it down there, and I would just about guarantee that if, if for whatever reason a future Commissioner Court decided they wanted to sell that property for a landfill, they're gonna, they're gonna bring it back up to light and.
They will.
See what happens. Thank you.
And Judge, Commissioner, just so you're aware, I actually spoke at length with Mr. Elliott this morning, I think this is where this information came from, and what he asked me to do was make sure TCEQ has this information, because this would be relevant to see, to the TCEQ process of approving anything that could happen in that area. So that'll be conveyed to TCEQ shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, no opposition? Motion carries. Number five is requesting approval of donation child welfare board twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents from Stop Child Abuse license plates. Move for approval?
Second.
Hush made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None motion carries. Number six is considering possible action on county burn ban. And Jason, come up and tell us.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So over the last seven days, we'll knock on some wood, the county fire departments have not had any active wildland fires, which means that the county citizens are doing a really good job of watching their, their controlled burns, keeping them under control and whatnot. On the low side, as far as our drought index is concerned, our numbers are, are one oh six. So that's on the, relatively on the very low side of things, and that's pretty much in the south part of the county, and then on the west side of the county as well. The high side is five eighty-one, which does put it on the hi, the higher end of the drought index. And as I stated last week, that is going to be Commissioner Condala's district on the east and the northeast side of Brazos County where the driest conditions are, where the county averaged about three hundred and sixteen. So one of the things I do want to point out, that about three-quarters of Brazos County is considered still in moderate drought conditions, meaning we haven't gotten an abundance of rain to, to knock out the drought completely from our area, and that was checked as of this morning. I did send an email to, to the judge and the Commissioners yesterday, as well as the Chief of Staff, just kind of explaining where we're at with that. Did speak with all four ESD volunteer fire chiefs. South Brazos County Fire Chief, after speaking with him, he's actually in favor of just monitoring it for the next week or so to see where we're at. The District Two and the Precinct Three Fire Chiefs, which are the east side and the northeast side, are absolutely in favor of a burn ban at this point. And then Precinct Four, which is on the west side of the county, said that his district is green, but he absolutely supports having a burn ban, because any kind of wildfire that pops up affects all the fire districts as a whole. So that's kind of where we're at with that, and I'll remain available for any questions.
Yeah, I had motion that we begin the burn ban because you can't spot burn ban, and like you said, a call from Precinct Two or Three will affect Four and One. So for that reason, it's, it's never popular, but motion to approve a burn ban?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve burn ban. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. All right. Thank you, Jason. Number seven is approval of.
Judge, if I may.
Sure.
On the burn ban, it was drafted for thirty days in mind with the authority given to you by the court to terminate if it needs to be terminated earlier.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. In case we get rain. Maybe, you know, a lot of times that happens, you know, once we pass one, we get the rain in the next day or two, so.
It's true.
Be a good thing. Number seven is approval of arts renewal for the ten ninety-five C through Texas Association of Counties. Move for approval?
Second.
Hush made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. All right. Thank you, Jason. Number seven is approval of.
Judge, if I may.
Sure.
On the burn ban, it was drafted for thirty days in mind with the authority given to you by the court to terminate if it needs to be terminated earlier.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. In case we get rain. Maybe, you know, a lot of times that happens, you know, once we pass one, we get the rain in the next day or two, so.
It's true.
Be a good thing. Number seven is approval of arts renewal for the ten ninety-five C through Texas Association of Counties. Move for approval?
Second.
Hush made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Here's one beside.
Okay.
Got it. Number eight is approval of contract twenty-five dash one oh five wireless tower support and maintenance with Alpha Omega Wireless.
Move for approval?
Second.
Hush made second. Discussion.
Judge, this, this, this states, "The contract provides service to a Brazos County employee." So I guess that's one person. Interruption in this service would impede the employee's capability to effectively complete their job, essentially hindering productivity." Can somebody address this? What exactly?
So I think, I think what, we have a tower on top of the courthouse that serves DPS. We've got a employee out there at DPS that actually sends ticket information from DPS to the JP's. And so that, right now, that tower that's on top of the courthouse serves that, that's how we transfer that information. Climbing that tower is, I, I can let Charles speak to it.
If I may clarify that, there should be an S on the end of that?
Employees?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. It is an inverted.
No, that's okay. This, this just wasn't in our, our week and a half of training.
I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what this contract is, if that, if you wanted to know that what this contract, or the public, what this contract is, is if we have an issue, somebody to climb that tower over there, we don't want our employees climbing our tower when they're not certified to do it, and I'm sure they don't want to do it either. So that's what the contract is for, to, to actually have somebody, if we have a problem. Is that correct? Okay. All right.
Move for approval? Do we already move? Okay, we just need to vote.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is award of the following, one oh one North Texas Avenue, CIP twenty-five five sixty architect for one oh one North Texas Avenue, recommended awards Plan North Architectural Company and CIP twenty-five dash five sixty-three construction manager at risk for one oh one North Texas Avenue, recommended award to Spawglass Construction Company.
Move for approval?
Second. Hush made second. Discussion.
Yeah, okay, Judge. Let me tell you how bored I was yesterday. I read all, all a hundred-plus pages of this contract, and I'm always a little nervous when it comes to bottom-line numbers. It says, "Project cost does not include the compensation of the architect and the architect's consultants, financing, or other costs, which are the responsibility of the county." I, I understand that to a point. And I think later on, I got to where it said additional consulting, oh, it says, "The architect's fee as defined in this document will be nine percent of the cost of the work." So I figured that to be four point five million dollars. Is that right, Charles?
At this time, yes, sir.
At this time? That's scary, when you say at this time. Does that mean it's going to be a whole lot more, or a whole lot less, or?
It will more, we are hopeful, we're, it is likely that it will be less than that. We set the construction limitation for the actual construction of the building to be fifty million dollars, as outlined in the construction contract, the CM at Risk. And so there is a likelihood, I don't want to guarantee anything, but that is what we've set as a ceiling. When we actually get into the full design and all of the project, it where, that number could be less than that. Anything that we have, any contracts that go forward beyond that, we'll have to come back to Commissioners Court for your approval, regardless of what the number is. So it's not like we're asking for permission to, for any amount of money. That is the limitation set on it at this point. Any further remediation or amendments to that, we'll come back to Commissioners Court. Likely have two packages. At this time, that's what we envision. As we get further in the process, we'll define that further, but the first package will likely be for the site civil utilities, so forth and so on. That will be package one, so that they can begin construction on that, and they will be far enough along in the process to start working then on the second package, and that will be the building, the parking structure, and the elevated walkway over Texas Avenue.
I have full confidence in you that if they go over this four point five million dollars, that you'll be beating them over the head and telling them they're going to find problems up here, at least from me.
I can't admit that in court. This is recorded.
I understand.
But we will have strong conversations.
Charles is well-known around the state.
Yes, he is. Thank you, Charles. I appreciate it.
It's our pleasure.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Judge, is, wait. So is this for approval of the fifty billion dollar project, or just the four million for the architect?
Commissioner, it is for both of them. We have both of those parallel, because it's on the same project we made at A and B. If.
Judge, I, I'm going to move to table this. I have some concerns. I, I've not seen any documentation regarding the need for additional office space. I know there's office space available in the adult probation office. I know there's going to be office space available in the county administration building once it's remodeled. So I, I have real concern on no documentation regarding the need for the additional space to be built. That's a lot of money to be spent, and I certainly think it may be worthwhile, but without the additional documentation, to show what the current office space the county has in the District Court Building and the Administration Building, and what's being utilized, and what the projection of this need is, I'm just not comfortable voting for this.
Commissioner, we have undertaken, and I'll let Trevor take the programming piece of it, we've undertaken a study in, under the previous Commissioners Court, a programming study, to evaluate, after we purchased the building, the additional space needs that we have throughout the county in multiple facilities, from the courthouse standpoint, the administration building, as well as probation. And so Trevor can go through the details of each of those, but the probation building you mentioned has the ground floor that is not necessarily conducive with its current configuration and size and all, to accommodate the additional needs, the growth patterns at the courthouse for additional courts or space. Again, I don't want to get into too many details. Trevor's more versed on that. We, we have documented those, and we'd be happy to provide you with a copy of that if you don't have it already. But we undertook that previously, did additional programming and all to get to the point that we are, that we felt comfortable putting out this solicitation.
I did not see that documentation provided to the court.
And, Trevor?
Bentley, I will second your motion to table this until you get back, and we can discuss it further.
So we've got a motion and a second to table, but I'd like to finish up discussion before we actually.
Sure. So we, we engaged with Broadus Planning last fiscal year to help us out with the programming for the space across, across the way. We met with the departments that are slated to go in this space once it's built. They did a deep dive into their space needs, and what we ended up with was a programming document that outlined the rough square footage and the future growth of those departments. We, we slotted in about fifteen to twenty percent growth for probation, the JP's office, and the constable's office. The JP and constable offices are fairly, fairly small. The adult probation has about sixty employees today. And then the growth for the public defender is sort of, that one's a little in flux because of the grant and everything else for it, but our, but our design plan and our programming for that space was for a full, full regional public defender's office.
Well, and I certainly support public safety and our court system, but this to me seems like a failure of the staff to provide the court with the information to make the decision. I mean, I've not been on the court, but this is eight weeks, but you're asking me to make a fifty million dollar decision without providing me the backup.
We can, we can provide that for you, Commissioner. We did do a full briefing to Commissioners Court, the last Commissioners Court, once this document was done during budget time, and that's how we generated the, the budgetary numbers that came out of the planning document.
Well, and some of the things, I mean, you mentioned public defender's office, and right now, we have public defender's office located in a former JP Constable area with cubicles and all those things that are really not, they're not appropriate, but that was the only place we could put the public defender's office. I mean, my hope and my goal would be that the public defender's office, when we have the space, would become regional. The, and the reason for regional is that the state likes counties that, that work together and do regional kind of things, and they're willing to, to help with more funding longer term to support a public defender's office if it's regional. Currently, I think the grant we have is maybe two more years. I don't remember exactly, but it's.
Current grant ends September thirty of twenty twenty-five. The applications for the new grant for next year will be made right.
And, and if we get that one, do you know?
The request has been for thirteen new positions, if I remember correctly.
And do we know how long that would last if we?
One year.
One year.
How many total years are available?
And I will tell you that.
One year at a time.
I understand. How many total years is the public defenders, if we continue to get the grants out? When does it play out?
The original grant was for two years, a hundred percent financing from the state. The current year, fiscal year October first of twenty twenty-four to September of twenty-five, is eighty percent provided by the state, Texas Indian Defense, twenty percent picked up by the county, and it's a one-year grant.
I get that.
But if we continue to get it, that's the thing. That's why I can't speak, because the contract's only one year at a time. But the plan is if we get, this year we got eighty-twenty, next year would be sixty-forty on what was granted this year, which was nothing, except going to eighty-twenty. I think the public defender, if he applied for thirteen new positions for twenty-five, twenty-six, that grant would be eighty-twenty split. It, it becomes a rolling eighty-twenty, sixty-forty, forty-sixty, twenty-eighty. It becomes a rolling eighty-twenty, sixty-forty, forty-sixty, twenty-eighty. And then, the county a hundred percent picks it up, eventually. But again, you apply every year for basically a four-year program. Does that make sense? Probably not.
But here's my, in addition to that, my concern, not only just public defender, with the growth of the court building, there is a need to remove the Justice of the Peace Department and the Constable from that facility, put them across the street, because of the space need, that as the county is growing, there is a significant space need. And it's, in a way, it's unfortunate that you, because you're coming in new, I had the same issue, coming in new, not having certain information, because of the depth and what they've all done a phenomenal presentation on, why is it important that we have this space, that we use it the way that we use it, increasing for, so the need for the space has been vetted. Unfortunately, you may not have the depth of that information, but the need is great, not only just for the space for the court to grow, but to move those entities out of the court, and provide that facility for the future growth of the county, and the need to get moving on this project, because as we all know, the longer we, it takes for us to approve construction, that it also, the cost, it may be fifty million dollars now, but given the cost, the potential for all of the construction costs, it could go up another ten million dollars. And I think it is important encouraging them to update you on this, but the need for this facility, in my opinion, far outweighs some of the concerns that you have.
Well, and you mentioned Precinct Four, which, you know, they would move out, vacating their area on the fourth floor. By doing that, it would allow the new four-seventy-second District Court, once we've remodeled enough to make it happen, put them up there on their fourth floor, and it would vacate the old eighty, the historical eighty-fifth that they're now temporarily in. You know, we've used that space, if a court had a large jury, we used to be able to use it for voir dire, for large juries, because of the size of the current district courts up there, and that's been the need for it. And we've also used it when trials were happening from out of county, and they had a change of venue, and we have allowed trials to come here, when they weren't able to do it in their county. We've helped other counties out that way. I mean, they've paid for it, but we've done it. But we don't really have a place to do that anymore, because that old historical eighty-fifth is now, has the four-seventy-second located in there, and that was, that was the purpose of trying to get JP Constable Four off the fourth floor into this new building. One of the steps would then, also, would be adult probation, moving them out of the parking garage office space. When that gets vacated, then the District Attorney's Office, which is, takes up most of the third floor, they could be moved over to the area that currently the adult probation is in. By doing that, I mean, there's been a lot of talk over the years about a central jury pool, where you could have jurors come in for all of the courts at one time, and they do voir dire over there with that. Currently, when we have large jury pools come in, and they don't do central, they do it on each individual court, but we have people standing in the hall, because there's just no room to do any of that kind of stuff. This would vacate enough space over there that would actually give us room, I think, to be able to do those kinds of things. And it's really a, I mean, you know, you get, I don't remember what you get paid for jury service, six dollars a day, or something like that. So these folks are basically volunteering their time to come over to service jurors, and currently, we just don't have the area to be able to allow them a place to sit down. And so, those are all the kind of thoughts that have gone through. In the past, we've had a lot of discussions about the movement of people around to make those kinds of things available for future needs, and I really, I mean, I go back to the, to the public defender's office, the regional deal, would the state, I know of at least one instance where the state pays long-term, they're paying, I think it's thirty or forty percent of the county's cost for indigent defense, because that county participated in a regional public defender's office. So it relieved part of the burden for the county, that county, and the surrounding counties, in their case, too, for the cost of indigent defense, which is what we, the counties, are required to do. But by doing the regional, it actually gives us a place to do it, and they're, right now, they're, the public defender's office is packed in there, and if we add more staff on, there's just no, there's really no realistic way to do it, and there's no place to even shift them to.
Judge--
Sorry, go ahead.
Judge, I think the issue here is the fact that Bentley and I come in as new Commissioners, and we're asked to vote on a fifty-million-dollar project that we haven't been brought up to speed on. I'm not saying that we don't need the space, but I'm saying that we need to, somebody needs to talk to us about it, because that's a big, big amount of money. You know, and we just want to hear from somebody about it.
I concur. I mean, especially with y'all coming in new. Tabling it, just to brief you guys up, you know, where you guys can sit and be brought up to brief on this. I don't, you know, tabling it, I don't think is a harm, especially if the two of you feel not uncomfortable voting on it at this, you know, at this time.
Judge, and that was my, all that y'all have raised very compelling arguments, and I certainly understand that, but again, this is a frustration I've had, and you and I've discussed this, and so have I and the Chief of Staff, about needing to get the information so I can make the decision. You can't just give me a document, and I looked through the contracts, and I'm fairly, I'm a lawyer, so I can understand what we're be asked to do, but what I didn't see in the documents before me was a study of the office space and a justification why we needed the additional office space. So if that's out there, if y'all can just get that to me--
Yeah.
--that'll probably be fine. And that's why I didn't want to vote today, because quite frankly, without that information, I'm afraid I'd have to vote no.
Okay. Well, and I think delaying a short amount of time, maybe a week, if y'all can try to come up to speed fairly quickly, I think my concern would be that I think they have, these two, the Plan North and Spawglass, have both got a team that they've kind of lined out to do the project if it's passes, and I don't, I would hate for us to lose the team if we delay too far. I mean, Charles, you might want to speak to that.
A short delay, we're, Project Management and Purchasing be happy to bring y'all, provide y'all with the programming documents, the study by Broadus, so forth and so on. That is not an issue at all. We want to make sure that the court is fully educated. We do have concerns if we delay it too long, but a week or so is not, I don't anticipate great heartburn with that.
Yeah, as much money as they're gonna make, I'm sure a week doesn't mean anything to them. That's a lot of money.
It is. They do have teams that are proposed for each of the projects, and the reason the long delay is concerned, they have teams proposed for those projects, and they don't pay them to sit around very often, and so, if we are not able to engage in a reasonable amount of time, then they could engage that team on another project. So, they were all scored and evaluated as highly qualified based on what they submitted to us at this time. So, we can, we can keep that ball rolling as timely as possible, we'll make sure and engage the Commissioners to do that, being mindful of not trying to violate any open meetings acts or anything like that.
Okay. All right, so, I've got a motion and a second to table the contract, and if we, if y'all have been able to come up to speed by, you know, the time that we have to file next week, if y'all are brought up to speed or comfortable with it, we'll put it back on the agenda next week, if y'all--
You'll have it before noon.
Okay.
Yeah, Judge, I'd say, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda next week, and if we can't get up to speed, then I'm gonna table it again till we can. I mean, I want to get this done. I understand the need for urgency.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second to table. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Motion carries. Number ten is award of RFP, CIP twenty-five dash five sixty-nine, Litterate Road Stabilization Project Recommended Award is Solid Bridge Construction.
I move approval and note that it's in Precinct Four.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion.
Charles, where'd he go? Oh, here he is. I noticed that this was a Hunsfield Company that got this contract, but before I say anything against them--
They bought a Mazda in Bryan--
Yeah.
Some years ago.
Woo, that was awesome.
You are so good. You are so good.
I've been waiting to use that, I ain't gonna lie.
But I noticed in your packet, it had a, it had a, it had like four different people or five different people that applied for it, and you gave them a number rating, so, congratulations, I thought that was great. That's all I needed.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
It's our pleasure.
Thank you for the Mazda thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eleven is consider to take action on Wixon Creek SUD's Utility Permit to Construct a Road Board ninety-five-hundred-and-eight feet with Wheaton Loop to Provide Water Services Sites Located in Precinct Two. Move for approval. Second. Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twelve is request for approval for final plat for Coronada Estates Phase One along the Verit's Request pertaining to Brazos County Subdivision Regulations, Article Six, Section A, One, B, Henry A. Adams Survey, Abstract sixty-five, Brazos County, Texas Sites Located in Precinct Two. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number thirteen is approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County FY twenty-four, twenty-five, December twenty-four to February twenty-five, cash contribution forty-two-thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents to Specialty Court Program. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Judge, I hate unfunded mandates, and I want you to know that when I was in the legislature, I didn't, I didn't vote for any of them, because Randy Sims had me on speed dial the entire time that I was in the legislature. But it says here, "Due to reduce funding from the State of Texas for Specialty Courts." That's sad. All it's doing is just increasing what we have to pay with taxpayer money, where the state should be paying for this.
Unfunded mandates are coming up.
Unfunded mandates.
Agreed.
I would much rather have a women date than a mandate. So, just to make that clear.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number fourteen is tax refund application for the following. Move for approval, A through I.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number fifteen is budget amendments, FY twenty-four, twenty-five, budget amendments twenty-one point zero one through twenty-one point zero three. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seventeen is payment claims, approval of payment claims eight-two-zero, eight-three--
Sixteen. Sixteen, Judge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Personnel change of status, I'm sorry. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seventeen is payment claims, approval of payment claims eight-two-zero, eight-three-five, eight-three, claim number eight-two-zero, eight-four, eight-four, and claim number nine-two-zero, three-six-nine-one, through claim number nine-two-zero, three-seven-five-one. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Judge, I only have one question, and that is, is this entire packet, Packet Seventeen, is that entire packet claims for one week? Yeah, I mean, it's just like page after page--
Yes.
Page after page after page.
Yes, sir.
That's just for one week?
Yes, sir.
Ching. Okay.
Further discussion?
No, no, I'm just shocked. I'm just shocked.
Okay. We haven't voted on that yet. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty is an acknowledgment, we're gonna skip down to number twenty, acknowledgment of the following additional members appointed to the committee for RFP, CIP twenty-five five sixty-four, Architect for Building Maintenance for the Brazos County Expo and CIP twenty-five five sixty-five, Construction Manager at Risk for the Brazos County Expo, Brian Brown and Jim McCord. Move for approval. I think that's just an acknowledgment.
Oh, sorry, that is--
I think when we passed that the other day, we just, we're gonna acknowledge it.
Yeah, that's two, I acknowledge that those are two good choices.
Great. Twenty-one is acknowledgment of the Brazos County Juvenile Probation Department, Juvenile Justice Department Grant Funds for the year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-two is acknowledgment of the Brazos County Community Supervision Corrections Department Financial Statements for the year ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-three is acknowledgment of the twenty twenty-four Annual Report for Amber Alert Network Brazos Valley. Twenty-four is an acknowledgment of FY twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Budget Taxual by Fund as of March fifth, twenty twenty-five, and acknowledgment of FY twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Contingency Budget Taxuals by Fund as of March fifth, twenty twenty-five. Twenty-five is Juvenile Directors' Report on Detention Population, and I think I've got that here, and then it's not here. Juveniles in detention, twenty-four, males twenty, females four, and there are thirty-nine juveniles on electronic monitors. And next is Assurant Report on Inmate Population Chief.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, our population is seven-hundred-and-twenty. That's six-hundred-and-twenty-eight males, ninety-two females, and forty-three on electronic monitor.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Twenty-seven is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, if I might, can we confirm for the record that item number eleven was a road bore at ninety-five zero eight Wheaton Loop?
That makes more sense. Did I misread that?
You may have put feet in there, because it's a road bore, and I think you might have said nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-eight feet. So, okay.
All right.
Just wanted to confirm that that's the address.
Oh, that--
That's the address, is what you're saying?
That's the address.
Bruce, you're saying that's the address?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. That was just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Any announcements of interest items or possible future agenda topics?
Judge, could we, next, next week or the following week, could we talk about a County Department of Government Efficiency, made up of people from the local community? Let's say that each of us got to pick two people, and they could just look and see where there might be some efficiencies made within the county? That's kind of the popular thing to do now, from the feds all the way down.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with it, if you--
Okay. Thank you.
Any other announcement or future agenda topics? We will move back up to number eighteen and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero eight-seven for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And, of course, we need the court, attorneys, budget, audit, Kimberly, Chief of Staff, anybody else? I think-- All right. And the time is eleven fourteen. And the time is 11:14.
Got it? Okay. We're coming out of executive session. It's ten or eleven forty-nine. No action to be taken.
Okay.
Next item is to adjourn. Thank you.